I'm ready here. I just want to make sure I have my phone on silent. So I don't have to yell at myself. It even says it's 7:30. All right. Meeting of the Township of Persippany Troy Hills Planning Board for Monday, February 13, 2023 at 7:30 PM. Announcement is made that adequate notice of this meeting has been given and that it is being conducted in accordance with NJSA 10:4-6 at sec of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act. If we could please stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To our long-informed stance, one nation, united, God, native of the local community, and justice for all.
All right, Nora, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Didich.
Here.
Councilman DePiero.
Here.
Mr. Mealy.
Here.
Mr. Math.
Present.
Mr. Napolitano.
Here.
Ms. Veely.
Here.
Chairman Dingsmore.
Here.
We also have our board planner, Ms. Winter, our board engineer, Mr. Cangiano, and board attorney, Mr. Lagana.
All right, very good. This meeting is open to the general public. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak to something to this board about something that is not on our agenda tonight? Hearing and seeing none. We will move along to the resolutions. Everybody should have the resolutions, have seen the resolutions. And there's a note indicating who can vote on the resolutions. And not quite the same, but they're close. But I guess we'll go through them one at a time.
I think the first two can be done together, not the last one.
Very good. Do I have somebody willing to move the first two resolutions?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Mealy.
The first two resolutions. A motion to approve resolution for application number 22.507. Nine Campus Drive LLC, nine Campus Drive Block 202, Lot 3.11. And also a motion to approve application number 22.508. Cherry Hill Portfolio LLC, 99 and 119 Cherry Hill Road, Lot 411, Lots 16 and 16.01.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Napolitano, thank you. Nora, would you call the roll, please?
Mealy.
Yes.
Math.
Yes.
Napolitano.
Yes.
Dingsmore.
Yes.
All right. We have somebody willing to...
Mr. Chairman. Motion to approve application number 23:501. Ahmed Abujendiya, 12 Violet Street, Block 6, Lot 12, Zone R-1. Major soil moving permit associated with the construction of a single-family, new single-family dwelling.
Didich, is there a second?
Second. Hallier.
Mr. Napolitano, thank you. Nora, would you call the roll, please?
Didich.
Yes.
DePiero.
Yes.
Mealy.
Yes.
Math.
Yes.
Napolitano.
Yes.
Veely.
Yes.
Dingsmore.
Yes.
Very good. That gets us through our resolutions, so we have one item on our agenda tonight, and that's application number 22.502. Paul Miller, 189 Route 46, Lot 767, Lot 4.01. Preliminary and final major site plan to construct an addition for service bays, waiting area offices, and signage. Mr. O'Neill.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Joseph O'Neill, Garofalo Neil Rogirio, here on behalf of the applicant, Paul Miller Motors. This is replacing Land Rover with a Honda Service Center. We're adding bays and other associated uses. Before we get started, I know we like to deal with waivers first. Weakness.
All right. Ms. Winter is our planner, and she will be conducting the waiver discussion.
All right. There were a number of items that were going to be addressed through testimony. But we do need a couple waivers for the site illumination on Form 5, Number 20, Number 21, the landscaping plan, which was provided but was not signed and sealed by a landscape architect. And additionally, Number 27, which is in regards to proposed temporary contractors, trailers, et cetera, which is not applicable, and we have no problem with that waiver. The, on Form 5, 28 and 29, the traffic study and environmental assessment study. Don't object to either of those waivers. The site's already fully developed. And on Form 7, Number 3, if the combined preliminary and final approval is requested, submit separate sheets. It was just the one, and we don't have an issue with that one either. The rest of the items in regards to easements, there are a couple items for engineering, if our engineer found those acceptable. And I believe the rest would be addressed with testimony.
We'll address the engineering comments with testimony also, so we hope that board would see fit to allow.
Are there any waivers there that we need to vote as accepting here?
That traffic study, the environmental assessment, the illumination plans, landscaping plans, and the temporary contractors, trailers, or lack thereof.
Do I have a motion accepting those waivers as presented in the planner's report? I'll offer the motion. Do I have a second?
Second, Didich.
Nora, would you call the roll, please?
Didich.
Yes.
DePiero.
Yes.
Mealy.
Yes.
Math.
No.
No? Napolitano.
Yes.
Veely.
Yes.
Dingsmore.
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. With that, we'll call our first witness, if we may.
Sure.
Sir, please raise your hand. Do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give? Would be the truth, the whole truth, and the truth to help you guys?
Thank you.
Name and professional address for the record, please.
Daniel Bartels. 167 Arcady Way in Fort Lake, Mississippi, Rocket's, Texas, State of New Jersey, and several other states. Presented before this board, and also for the Land Rover project.
Can you please call your last name? And can you just remind us, speak into the microphone because we are recording?
Dan, why don't you go to it, show us what we're talking about. Let's mark that as A1.
Existing conditions?
Yes.
Three photos?
What you have here is the existing photograph of the existing building that was built in 1998 and was vacated in 2019 when we built the new store across the street, the Land Rover Jaguar. This basically shows the prototype pickle colors for Land Rover, which are green and beige, and the stone ramp and stuff like that. This is the existing, and I'll show you what we're proposing, but I want to start with the site plan itself. What you have...
Mark that as A2.
This is the existing site plan with proposed additions. The beige area is existing building. The darker color here, the light orange, is the proposed additions. The one addition here is for the customer drop-off. The new project is all about customer experience, and right now, the existing, it's just an open canopy, and they prefer it to be closed, so this is a closed structure for 10 cars from the morning they come up. Service advisor comes out, and they write them up.
Dan, would you mind...
Sorry?
Would you mind taking a step back so that people can see the exhibit?
No, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
There's no change to the curb cuts in the front. Mark what's up with the curb cuts that we're changing. The change you're going with here. This is all for, basically, the plan is dictated by the operation itself, how many days we need. There's no sales here. It's strictly service for Honda. So cars come in, drop off, and leave the car, give it for express service, and then they take off, and the service advisor brings it to the shop. There may be some express, we have an express area in the back, and we also incorporate the car wash, where all these cars will get washed as they turn. The floor plan is pretty simple.
Sir, O'Neill, he's hard to interrupt. Why don't we mark this as A3 since it is a similar exhibit, but we have a blown-up version and a condensed version?
Oh, okay. We'll mark the reduced version as A3. Thank you. We should mark all of the ones because not everybody got them.
So this is the proposed floor plan. You can see the drop-off here. The whole area in the front here is basically for waiting for customers, the service advisor desk, series of offices behind it. The parts area, the tech toilets and all that is going to be restored and renovated. Currently, there's not enough toilets, so we're renovating the toilets, AD/ADA, for both men and women. And then the existing building is to that point. And then this is the addition for the additional bays we'll leave. We also have a small addition in the back of the building, which is oil storage, is where the storage is in its self-contained masonry structure. And we built a break room out the back so that the technicians in that will have a place to eat, not inside the building, with a patio, I mean, inside the building with a patio that faces outside, so the whole sense of the exterior. This plane here shows you the roof of the service area, and there's an existing small second floor here, which part of it is the part of storage, and part of it is a small office for IT, which will remain. So there's really no work up here other than new shelving. I showed you that, the one rendering of what existing, this is what we're proposing.
A5.
Basically trying to change the image of Land Rover, which is green and beige, to Honda, which is blue, white, and black, and some gray also. So a painting of the existing green roof will take you to the large pylon that sits here as part of the existing building. Getting that, the corporate blue color for Honda, adding a sign up here, their logo and the sign. And then this portion here is the addition, the service center, meaning the entrance to the drop-off area. Everything else is basically existing. All the windows here exist. We're just going to paint the marions from the beige to blacks, so that, back to the Honda corporate colors, rather than just the leftover from...
Did you mark that as A5?
Sorry?
A5, please.
Colorized rendering of proposed additions, sir.
Yes.
And then these are the proposed materials that were...
That'll be A6.
A6.
Material board.
So again, this is the rendering that we showed you. This is a sign during the day, at night, that's illuminated. The drive-in, which is basically a white color, which is the majority of the facade. In the back of the building, we have some masonry, that's the base of the drive-in wall, the storefront in black. This is a piece of the blue that's part of the sign. And we have a lot of glass garage doors, bay doors that are depicted here in this small picture. We also did these elevations, which are a little harder to understand than, you know, two-dimensional, they're small, but it basically shows that the existing building, we have one addition to the rear of the building, which just expands everything that's there and just makes it longer. The same kind of clear story, windows into the service shop. We also adding skylights, big-ass fans that we do in most of the shops, and air conditioning. So this building from the front is going to look dramatically different from the side, it's just going to look longer. So the signage showing that we have here...
If you could mark that.
You marked that already.
He did.
A7.
A7.
And that's the sheet A2 elevation, I mean, sorry, that's elevations?
Yes.
And on the proposed signs, we'll mark this A8.
A8.
So these signs are basically the corporate graphics that Honda prefers. This is their big H, their symbol, the Honda sign below. All illuminated, and the rendering that shows this is as blue, and, I'm sorry, white letters, and white letters on a blue background. This is Paul Miller's corporate identity, Paul Miller with the flag, it's in black on the white surface. And then the service center sign is also in blue, and that's above the entrance to the service drop-off. The existing street pylon that exists today, we're just going to take it, repla it, the same height, same size, they just do the same thing in the blue with the white logo for Honda. Very simple kind of, you know, design for the signage also. And that's the end of the presentation. What more do you want to hear?
I have no further questions for this witness.
If I could just ask a question related to the signage that you just spoke about, there are two pre-existing non-conformers regarding the monument sign. Was that what was just referenced, the monument sign, or is that different than the monument sign, the Paul sign?
The way the monument sign they're talking about is this. It's all built itself.
Free stand.
Yes.
So the monument sign is the freestanding pylon sign?
Yes. That exists today.
That's the existing sign?
Right.
And you have two existing... There's just two pre-existing non-conformers with regard to that sign, so your testimony is that there's no change to that?
No change.
That's the only point of clarification. Thank you. I just was confused as to monument and the freestanding. I consider those two different things, but I just wanted to make sure.
Actually, three non-conformities.
I'm sorry?
There's three non-conformities, the size of the sign, the height.
Thank you.
And the setback.
Thank you very much for clarifying.
Mr. Math, you seem to indicate that you wanted some extra planning testimony of some sort, so if you could...
So, first question, so there's going to be no car sales here whatsoever? So the use is changing?
Well, it was service every quarter in Land Rover, but it was service and sales.
This, yeah, the service was ancillary to a dealership, correct? All right, and what's the change in square footage for the building? How much is the building increasing? It's doubling? Okay.
Our next, we'll have a witness later.
Playing with this, I think, is here.
Okay.
But that's a function of the operation inside. You go into this function, you need so many days, you have so many days, you need so many technicians, so you need to paint the toilets, the drop-off, that's playing this kind of customer experience, to be able to drop your car off in an additional space. The advisor come out and put it together.
No, I understand that. I just wanted to verify that the square footage is effectively doubling. Correct, okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Cangiano.
I work for the architect. Can you just... The proposed addition, that's 579 square feet, made up of the oil storage room and the break room?
Yes.
On the civil plans, they call out for a mirror exiting the garage service area. Because, and that mirror is needed because there's no sight distance looking at any vehicle that's approaching down that drive aisle.
This way.
Yeah.
This is one way.
That's correct. So that's one way. What I'm getting at is there any reason why we have that there as a sort of an obstruction to, and that's going to be a heavily used, that's the only exit doorway for the service bays, not the express bays, but the regular service bays. That addition is an obstruction to, you know, everyone, all the employees that are exiting out of that garage there. Just concerned about that location.
It's an exit, right? It still exits where they entered. Right?
I don't know. You tell me.
Because I can't. I mean, it's, realize there's no customer circulated around this, right?
Right.
Customer drops their car off, and then the techs take the cars. And the techs would be able to drive around, which I doubt they will, because there's no reason to go that way, other than get out of the building. They'd probably come this way, because the majority of parts is on this side, and that. There's nothing here. It's really more an accessway, like a driveway, for trucks and deliveries.
Mr. Walker will address this.
Okay, well, the question was more for the, does the location, does that addition need to be there, or could that, the spaces be re-configured inside the building to eliminate that small addition?
So I've done a lot of oil service, the bill of another's. The break room, toilets, and the lockers are kind of all three linked together, right? They gotta go in, and you move to the locker, and he goes to the bathroom, and then they'll go maybe have a cup of coffee. So all these three things are linked together. The oil storage, we could put that inside, but we lose a bag, which means the building is going to get longer. We prefer not to do that. And this is basically the oil for the service of the cars. It's its own door that come in here and brought the oil off, and we thought that putting that in a masonry structure, attached to the building, rather than being inside the building, would be an advantage from the fire safety and that, and have it where, you know, any smells from the oil or everything are inside the room, not inside the shop.
So you, I mean, I'm presuming you guys looked at the pros and cons of having that at that location?
Yes. And again, we don't see traffic coming this way at all. You know, for the truck that would come intermittently, you know, a couple times a week with deliveries, but there should be, customers should just drive in here, drop their car off, need to go in the waiting room with its express service, the car would come out, we go in here for express, and then come back here and be delivered to the customer waiting.
All right, okay, thanks.
One of the members of... Mr. Mealy?
Will you be providing valet service in the event that a customer cannot wait for their vehicle and wishes to go back home?
We have someone in operations who'll address that.
Thank you.
And just to go touch back on the signs again, is who's giving the testimony on the variances, what signs are existing, exactly what's changing from the existing to proposed?
Mark.
Okay.
Mr. Napolitano?
Yes, thank you. The A6, that sign that's in the middle, I don't know, can you go back to that one? The one that had the different textures? Yeah, that one. All right, so in the middle it says day view, night view. Where is that sign going to be? Is that the one on the building or the one by the street?
By the street.
All right, okay. Is the one on the building going to be illuminated too?
Yes.
All right, and then is there going to be a sign off Edwards Road?
No.
But do you still use an entrance next door?
It's, that's actually a driveway on the Abbey site.
Okay.
Really part of...
But there'll be no way to get in there and come around to the service area that way?
No.
Okay.
Thanks. Okay. Other members of the board or professionals?
Both, all the signs are to be internally illuminated?
Yes.
Okay. And the only other thing I have on here would be an ordinance that the sign can exceed 85% of the wall surface. 85% of the surface of the wall, and it appears that...
That's an error.
What?
That's an error, right? 85%, you got 80% of the wall signage?
Yep, that's what I have here. Maybe I mistyped it, but...
It's okay, it's the same.
No, it's, that's accurate.
That's accurate?
Yeah.
Okay.
We ignore, not the actual ordinance.
Maybe we need to update that one.
Right. The next line says that no sign shall exceed 150 square feet, so that eliminates that other comment.
Right, just confirm that it is.
It don't exceed that.
Under that size. That's all I have for right now.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions by members of the board? Counselor?
Thank you. Next witness, please.
Oh, I just have to ask, are there any members of the public who have questions of this witness, on this testimony at this time? Hearing and seeing none.
Mr. Chairman, there are no members of the public present. Everyone's part of my team.
Well, it's fun to put things on the record.
You can have him sworn. Do you raise your hand? Do you swear affirm the testimony about to give? Would be the truth, the whole truth, and the truth to help you guys?
I do.
Name and address for the record, please. Please call your last.
David Finsey, F-I-N-T-Z-Y, 17 Twin Oaks Road, Persippany.
Thank you. Counsel, please qualify the witness. Mr. Finsey, what is your position with Paul Miller?
I'm director of dealer.
You are primarily responsible for the design and the future operation of this site?
Yes, I am.
So we're going to have a couple of questions for you. It was originally a Land Rover dealership, right?
Correct.
Land Rover is now out of there, they're across the street.
Across the street.
Now Paul Miller's operations have a Honda down Route 46.
Actually, on Bloomfield Ave.
On Bloomfield Ave, pardon me. And this is going to be the service center related to that dealership. Can you just explain to us a little bit about the operation?
Well, and what, we're moving that whole dealership. The sales is going to a different cap, not Persippany.
Okay.
The service would be here, because there'd be space in the building, and that is not big enough to hold sales and service. And I was going to have this.
So what are you going to be, what's going to be conducted?
So we're going to strictly service, so we should service and parts, facility, obviously, parts, accessories, but service, but strictly for maintenance of cars, mechanical, no body shop or bodywork, strictly mechanical and maintenance of, you know, mostly Hondas, 95%. Obviously, we'll have some used vehicles that we sell and stuff, so that might make the way into this property stuff, but obviously, mostly just servicing Hondas.
So now you're familiar with the Audi dealership right next door, right?
Yes, that's where my office is.
And the operations here are going to be similar to what happens at Audi. Explain how service, cars are received and cars are processed.
Yes, so, yeah, they come in, they'll go in one of the two drives, pull in there, someone will brief them in there, do a kind of a walk around of that car, bring them to a service advisor, gets written up, and their car will be taken out back, even straight into a bay, or it's kind of like a waiting parking areas that we'll make in the back there that the mechanic will pick it up from.
And that area is that covered bay area, that new addition?
Correct, the tent spaces.
Okay.
That we do, you know, we have an Audi, we have all, you know, newer buildings you see with obviously car dealerships, to convince the customers you're not getting out in rain, cold weather, and snow, and stuff, you know, it's a nice indoor facility.
In fact, the only operation of the customer is to pull into that area, drop the car off with your technician, and walk into the waiting room.
Well, we'll see the service writer, or therefore, get written up. Most people will go into the waiting room in a Honda facility. You know, it's over 80% of customers waiting for their car.
What about those that don't?
Those that don't do things, you know, obviously, they have a ride themselves, we do have a shuttle that we won't take them to the house, but we also have some other cars also that we reserve that. So if you give it a load of car, which is clear charge, the other car's going to pass.
And that load of car stored on site, right?
Yes, it is.
Okay, how does the car go through the bay area? Could you walk us through that a little bit?
Yeah, you got, you got two different things. Someone that's there for express, you're there for a roll change tire rotation, you have the very quick kind of service, you have the bays. So express, obviously, they come out here, they bring it straight in, and park it to one of these.
Are you talking to the microphone?
Who's, who's that?
What color's the light on it?
It's red.
Red.
Okay, press it again, someone hit it.
Right now.
There you go.
Sorry about that. Yeah, so they'll, they'll pull it, the valets from, in the drive, will bring it around, get straight into one of these five bays, if it's an express type of service, so the guys can work on it right away, and when they're done, they'll pull it right out, they'll come around, they'll go through the car wash, and then bring the car back to the parking spaces, like right over here, for the customer to come out, take the car, and leave.
Just a word about that car wash. That's specifically and only for the use of Paul Miller's operation?
It's only for our service customers. You know, operated by us, and our people bringing the car through. No customers could ever go through it, or that kind of stuff.
Okay.
All right, and someone that's coming in for more mechanical work, bigger work kind of stuff, like I said, we, the car might get parked here or right behind the building, and when the mechanic has assigned it, they'll bring it in and take it to one of the other bays in the shop.
What about the longer turnaround cars? Do they go to different bays?
Yeah, that's what I said, though. So that's, the mechanic will take it to one of these bays or the ones up here.
What about parts? Where's parts?
The parts department, the mechanics, they all walk down here, they have a parts scanner right here to get it from, and this whole area in here is parts, and this, which right now is part of the showroom, so that'll, the glass will get covered up in the front. right now is part of the showroom, so that'll, the glass will get covered up in the front here, this is parts also. And then there's a mezzanine that you go upstairs that also has some parts storage, which is current. So, this part of parts and the mezzanine is currently in the Land Rover, we're adding this, taking this part out of the show, current showroom, because obviously the waiting room is already very large, and we need to store more parts for a bigger service center.
Now, part of this proposal is EV parts, electric vehicle parts.
Yes.
Uh, where's that gonna be looked in?
Those, I don't have it on.
Dan, you wanna help?
Up, it's not right here. Yep. So, we're proposing the first four spaces over here in the front, and then four more make ready, so they're ready for in the future, depending on what happens, 'cause, you know, we don't wanna have to tear everything up later if electric continues to take off, and we gotta put more in at that point, so...
Total of eight?
Total of eight. Four initially there, and then four prepared to be there if, when needed. Plus, even the manufacturer, sometimes they'll give us standards of what we're required to have, so although we don't know yet, it could be at any point they could say, "You need to have six." And then I would have to, you know, have to have, be able to have six at that point. So...
So, all the parking of the vehicles is on the side and in the rear for your operations, right?
Correct.
No overnight parking of vehicles in the front of this?
In the front, no.
And those EV spaces we're talking about are not open to the general public as just customers of Paul Miller, right?
That is correct.
Thank you. I have no further questions for this witness.
Any questions by members of the board? Mr. Dedich?
Mr. Chairman, yep. Excuse me. So, could you please explain the customer flow once, one more time? How are they getting in? How are they getting out? I'm a little bit concerned about, there are 10 cars in that area. Somebody comes in, stops, drops the car, he's number four, there are three cars behind him, two cars in front of him, one car on the side. What happens? Is it safe?
Okay, so when a car, and obviously we've, we have this flow up with 10 cars, that's not what the case would be, so someone will pull it, like imagine this was empty, first person coming in is gonna come in and drive all the way to the front. A valet is gonna greet them, go walk around the car, bring them to one of the advisors that would be here, and then they're gonna take the car and go. Now, occasionally, there's times that there's a few cars there at the same time, so there might, you know, get backed up with two, four, or six here, but they're, they're always just kind of, they're not just keeping them in there, they're moving them out, because, you know, especially, again, a lot of them are express, they gotta get in the shop quick, you, make sure you all have cars, so like they tell you, "We'll get you in and out in an hour." You just let it sit there for 15 minutes, it's not getting in and out in an hour. So, the flow is to get them out as fast as possible.
Yeah, so, not, yeah.
Or park the space back here or straight right into the express space.
So, the customer comes in, he gets out of the car, then what happens? Where is he going? Where is he walking off?
He's walking in, there's doors here, you see?
Yep.
All different doors, and, and right here will be desk for the service riders, people that'll...
Okay. Now, now he has to take a shuttle, right, to go home, right? Where is the shuttle parked?
The shuttle will probably be parked in like a space right over here, the valet would go and get it, bring it around, and the customer would come out, the doors here, they'd pick them up, and then...
So, there's a possibility that the customer is walking through the cars, right? There may be vehicles around now.
No, no, no. Customer would come out, like I said, the shuttle would come out like in the front here, meet them out front, and take them from there. If the customer's here, being ready up, they'd come through.
Okay. So, shuttle will move there for people?
Come out to the front part and take them from there, because we're not, we're not going in this direction with cars to back through.
Okay. So, another scenario, right?
Yeah, if someone wants to, we shut the customers, yes.
If they're picking up a loaner car, are they walking around in the parking area where the cars are, or how is that working?
Um, we were gonna actually put some loaner cars, so this parking...
Go back to the side plan.
Yeah, side plan.
Right.
Yeah. We, we were gonna put loaners like here for them to be able to walk, kind of walk out and ac, and come in access. So, yes, they'd be walking through the parking lot.
Okay. I mean, I would suggest we put some sort of, I don't know, zebra crossing or some sort of thing where, you know, it's much safer for customers to walk there, yeah, because there are vehicles around that, you know, so...
Yeah. Something to consider. Absolutely.
Also, are there any, um, so customers are not parking anywhere, right? They're just either taking a shuttle, taking a loaner car?
Again, like if a customer wanted to come in and did, was like, wanted to come in and ask a question or something, I mean, I, you know, not go into the drive, that's why, you know, we have these parking spaces out front.
Okay. Yeah, basically, I was gonna ask about the accessible parking, right? The handicap parking?
Yep. That's also right up front. Okay.
All right. Thanks.
So, yeah, these are just kind of extra spaces for someone, if they were coming to pick someone up that was in the waiting room, like, you know, my wife was there and I was just gonna go get her, I'm telling, she said, "Go meet me out front," you know, pull it here and park, and get them.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Math?
Um, to follow up with Mr. Dedich's question, when somebody's done with service, do they have to go pick up their car from the parking lot and walk across to get it and find it? Is it gonna be parked in some of those spaces?
Yes.
Okay. Are the, the spaces gonna be numbered?
Um, well, but that's probably actually a pretty good idea.
I go to Madison Honda all the time, they have all numbered spots, I tell you, where to go get your car afterwards.
Yep.
So...
Yeah, not a bad idea to number this, this road.
No, but, but the key, the key is the customers are gonna have to walk out to the parking lot.
Correct.
All right.
Yeah, this, this isn't big enough, you know, five cars this way and five cars this way would...
Understood. You're not taking people's cars back for them if they're waiting, is really the bottom line.
Right.
Have to go get it. And what are your hours gonna be?
Uh, current hours are 7:30 to 8:00, Monday to Friday, 7:30 to 5:00 on Saturday. Always on Sunday.
All right.
That's our current hours.
Um, last question, and maybe I should've asked the architect this, the existing Land Rover dealer, how many service bays does it have?
How many does it have? It had 10, 16, 17, 18? I was gonna, I've tried to count them, I had 18.
Okay, so it's going from 18 to 29. Like, the proposed has 29 bays, correct?
Yeah. 30?
I mean...
Oh, 29, now you don't count it.
Okay, all right, thank you.
It was the tire thing, yeah.
Oh, thank you.
So, 29, yep.
Mr. Canjiano?
Um, just on the parking, from an operational standpoint, I see the required, based on an automotive repair station, the required number of parking spaces is 72 with the office per accounts, and you have 165 spaces, and it looks like you were trying to get it to maximize the number of spaces on the site plan. What, operationally, what, what do you need 165 parking spaces for?
Well, obviously, you have all the employees, you have the loaner cars, you have EV spaces and handicap that, in my head, I was taking up 10. And then, besides the, obviously, waiters, unfortunately, in today's world, there's more days down now with cars because of supply chain problems, so we tend to now have a bunch of cars that kind of get stuck.
Okay.
In our parking lot, in the current, so I'm kind of, we kind of use what we're, how many spaces we currently need there, raised it a little bit, because this is a bigger service facility, expect to grow, so we added a small percentage higher than what we're currently using in our current space.
And if you mentioned that I missed it, how many employees are you roughly expecting on a shift?
Uh, we currently, I didn't say it, so we currently have about 32. Obviously, we'll start out with 32 here, but our, our goal is to be probably somewhere around 40, 41-ish, as we grow into, into some of the extra space now that we have it. Because we're gonna have to hire more mechanics, and unfortunately, that isn't so easy when you first get in there, it'll take us time to, to create, you know, gain those extra people.
And then the, the parking spaces in the front along the, facing the building and then facing the highway, looks like about 20 spaces up there. What's the, and there, you obviously have the handicap spaces there in the EVs.
The EVs.
Um, besides those, so what's the intended use of that area?
Well, like I said, you're gonna get people that are getting picked up, chopped off, and you picked up, that happens a lot, so, you know, we wanted to have some pa, some spaces there right in front for that. And occasionally, you'll also get some people, you need to park for your Honda, you know, So, you need to park for your Honda, you know, you park in this front, kind of come in and go to the parts retail counter.
Okay.
Pick up a lot of parts, whatever you need, so, that's what those few other spaces are for, I mean, just to make sure we have enough everybody.
To follow up on Mr. Canjiano's question, you're not gonna have any vehicle inventory from your sales operation on this site at all, are you?
Not for sale, no, but, again, you, you come to my sales department and trade in your used Honda that's three years old, before we're gonna retail it at that place, it has to go through the shop. So, it'll end up coming here, going through the shop to be reconditioned, and then go back to that.
Okay.
Could be out there for a day or two.
So, Dan, if you remember that for conditions, just, thanks.
It would've been testimony thus far that there would be no sale.
It's not, it's not, they're not being displayed out front or any of that stuff. They're actually there, if they're there, they're there for service.
Right.
That's what they're there for. What?
No stickers in the window, sale.
Um, it, no, because at that point, it'll have a sticker that says "Not for sale" on the windshield. Used cars, you have to get those stickers right away because of the law to put on them, but probably at that point, it would still only just have the "Not for sale" sticker on it.
All right. Other members?
I have a couple.
Okay.
Uh, who exactly's gonna use these EV ports in the front? I think you might've said it, did you say?
Well, it's for customers, and then it'll also be, again, there aren't, right now, they don't really have them, but we've got a plan for the future at this point. Um, you know, there are good parts, times, people bring in their EVs, and it's not enough charge to do whatever we've gotta do, and, you know, we put it out front, or...
So, Honda doesn't have a EV car yet?
When you drop off, and you're gonna leave it, and we'll, we'll bring it around front and just recharge it for you before you pay it back up.
Okay. But Honda doesn't have a EV, EV car, do they? Does Honda have an EV car right now?
No.
There is.
It's because they're company.
Oh. He's saying yes, you're saying no. Is there one? There is one.
There's one. They have hybrids right there.
Okay.
Only have hybrids.
All right. Just for the future, in other words?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, they're already telling us that they are, and they say that we're gonna have requirements, so how many you have to have, I'm guessing, I'm guessing at it a little bit right now, that's why I'm saying the four plus four future.
Yeah.
Because I don't know what the requirements are, they're working on that right now, but yes, they're planning to come out with the cars over the next two years.
All right. Um, you mentioned West Caldwell, is that where the service area is now, that's basically gonna be this service area? Is that kind of how it goes?
Yes. Currently, it's one facility, like two buildings.
Yeah, sales there and service.
It's all one, on one piece of property.
Right. And you're, so the service there is closing down, it's coming here.
Correct.
And the sales is gonna stay there?
Sales is gonna be going to another location.
All right.
In another town.
Okay. Uh, all right. Uh, it's gonna be easy for anyone that lives, I guess you could say, west of this, and just they can get to this facility very easily. Anyone that lives east of this, it's gonna be horrible to get to this facility, because coming down 46 west, you have to go all the way up to, where's our E-Turn at?
You have to go to Home Depot.
Well, there's a light by the hotel.
You gotta Home Depot. You gotta go around Winkies.
Well, then New York would bring it to Edwards Road, which I had a question before about that, about the signage on the back Edwards Road. So, is the Edwards Road exit gonna be, gonna be used for this? Because I'm gonna, I'm gonna bet you right now, I don't, I'm not betting.
Could a customer get there? You could of course get there, because the properties are tied together, but there's not a...
Google Maps is gonna bring you Edwards Road.
There's not a wall.
It's probably a five minute savings.
So, I mean, I can't stop them, it's not...
So, then, will they need to have a sign there?
Again, do we want people driving through the other parking lot? Not necessarily more chances of them going.
Mr. Finsey, that's a, that's an entrance on the Audi property, isn't it?
Correct.
And that's used exclusively for Paul Miller operations.
Yes.
Are you gonna be okay with them using that driveway then?
Yes.
Is there gonna be a sign that says "Service this way," "On the service this way"?
They'd have to direct them all the way up the road, turn, make that sharp turn at the used car lot, come back around to the front. Paul Miller's operations, whatever, when they come in, the front entrance and into that van.
They'd rather be in the front, because it's not, they're kind of driving this, you know, they can come in here and be driving this one.
Yeah, they're cutting through.
Then they gotta come and kind of like flip around.
I mean, they can go on the easement road between the two, and then circle this way, but they don't necessarily know, so obviously, you want them to come in off of 46.
Yeah.
It's a better flow for them.
Of course.
Mr. Mealy, you had a question?
Yes, will you be, uh, providing parts for people that wanna do their own repairs?
Yeah, that, that's where I said, like, some of these front spaces, they could park here, and there's a retail parts counter.
Well, I mean, as if they wanna buy parts and take them home and do their own repairs away.
Yeah, they would come here and there's a retail parts scanner.
Okay, great.
For them to go and be able to.
Thank you.
And pick it up.
All right, I'm gonna ask a question here based on Mr. Canjiano's questions and a remark made to me by our counselor. Uh, they have, I'm gonna refer to it as the Northwest Passage. You've got the road that goes along the side of the building that is to the west-ish. There you go.
This way?
Yes.
Yes.
We talked about that, I'm talking to you as, as being part of the, of the applicant rather than one of the professionals. Because we're looking at that and frankly, I agree with Mr. Canjiano that that's an incredibly blind spot to be coming out of the building. So it was concerning enough that would the applicant consider putting a sign up along the lines of authorized personnel only to drive along that Northwest Passage? And.
You mean like to put it here, so they go, absolutely.
Right, because.
Absolutely put it up.
Because what we would want was we would not want the public in there at all.
We don't want the public either, because that, that just means they're kinda like now lost and not knowing where to go.
That's.
So I'd rather them not be there.
That's exactly right, we're, we're trying to make it because that, i- if you have a truck in there unloading and then you have that oil storage facility, you're, you're, you're coming out really blind.
Yeah, no, I.
And even, even with a mirror, I'm not a big mirror fan.
We'd be very happy to put a sign out, a sign out there if that's what you wanted, hundred percent.
And I'm just, I'm just, based on Mr. Canjiano's thoughts, I mean, it, it really looks like it would be a difficult thing for somebody who is not knowing exactly what they're facing
Okay.
to work through that, so. All right, any other questions by members of the board, any of our professionals that have any more thoughts?
Along those same line, proposing the mirror, but any consideration to yellow striping in that area so that way, perhaps a signage that says slow and the yellow striping so that way as a vehicle is approaching that area, they know to slow down, because again, that's a very, very blunt, you know, tight blind spot with a loading area to your left and a building to your right, you're really, as a driver. What I'm noticing also is, and, um, your, your bay on that bottom corner is a two-way in. So you're really only allowed, and it's only technicians that get it, but the only exit point is that exit point, correct? All service vehicles have to come out that, that door, so it's gonna be travel.
Yeah, I mean, again, I, you know, signs, you know, it's always a thing, the sign is, we don't put on it. I'll put ten, I'll put five signs, I, I went like that, I'm all good, because I, I agree with you on that. If you want a bunch of signs or yellow on the, the road, I'm good.
I would actually suggest putting a stop sign right at that spot.
Oh, right here.
Maybe even a speed hump right there.
Something to slow traffic down.
Yeah, slow it down, yeah.
So that they, everybody comes to full stop there and then they can see each other.
And it might be in addition to the mirror.
I like that idea.
That makes sense.
So you've got a stop sign, you've got hash, hash, you've got a stop and a.
Authorized personnel.
Authorized personnel up here, back here.
And now we got a speed bump.
Well, I think if you put the stop sign, we don't need this speed bump.
Well, my only concern is if you just have a sign and people aren't used to stopping, they won't stop.
Well, these are employees, so, yeah, and delivery trucks, so.
Even worse.
Yeah, and you, basically, we want traffic calming there and we want that to slow down.
Okay.
Definitely the stop sign, stop bar, and I think a, a speed hump of some height, of some fashion, uh, that it's a physical deterrent from speeding through there.
So you agree to work with our professionals on making sure that this area is calm to the point where accidents are unlikely?
We want it to be safe, I don't want our mechanics pulling out and.
Yeah.
Either in any of those.
You gotta hire a cop to stay now.
We haven't brought traffic signal yet, so.
So, um, I visited the site today and the parking lot's currently full of Audi cars. Is the, they're going to be, um, shared parking between those two or?
Not really, in, in general, no, I mean, obviously because we have this space we're using, but it's also used for other things. We actually have, you know, lots of things parking back there.
Right.
We have other parking in the back, but people, that isn't paved and stuff, so people rather park on pavement than, on, you know, on gravel, on the pea gravel kinda stuff. That's just a little bit of it. But no, once we're here, since this'll take up the space, it won't just be there for employees to kinda park their cars.
So right now it's just overflow, but it won't be?
Overflow, because it's available. Hey, this, I could park here, this is a lot closer than me having to park back here or we have parking back here to get to my, you know, where I work. Laziness, I think takes over.
It happens.
So.
Okay.
Okay.
Any other members of the board? All right, any members of the public hearing and seeing none, Mr. O'Neill?
Thank you, uh, Mr. Walker.
Do you swear from the testimony you're about to give it be the truth, the whole truth, and like the truth of all you've got?
Yes, I do.
Name and address for the record, please, while you're left.
Uh, Mark Walker, fifteen Barton Road, Mount Lake, New Jersey.
Mr. Walker, you have appeared here many times as a professional, aren't you?
I have.
Kept your license current for tonight?
I have.
All right. Why don't you go ahead and walk us through what we're proposing?
All right, uh, let me just run through my testimony here. Um, so as, as mentioned, the site's a former, uh, site of Land Rover, one eighty-nine, Route forty-six, eastbound. Uh, it's known as Block seventy-sixty-seven, uh, Lot four point oh one. Uh, the property is currently developed with fifteen thousand square foot, uh, sales and service building. A hundred and eighty-nine parking spaces on the site today, lighting, landscaping. Uh, located in the B-two highway development zone, allows for automobile sales and service. It's got a hundred and sixty-eight feet of frontage on Route forty-six. Uh, currently to the west and the south is a large Cube Smart building. As you can see on Exhibit eight-two, uh, on the top part of the sheet, the parallel buildings are, uh, are self-storage buildings. And along the south side, which is on the left side of Exhibit eight-two, are more very large, uh, self-storage buildings. Uh, adjacent, um, uh, is also just to the south, is a very strange piece of property. It's a thirty-five by two-hundred foot strip of land running from the back of the property and running behind, uh, the Audi dealership. It's, as I mentioned, thirty-five by two-hundred, has no frontage at all, but it has a, an access and parking easement over it that allows the Audi dealership as well as the, uh, the current subject property to park and to travel over that small, uh, piece of property. Um, to the east is the Paul Miller Audi dealership, which also has sales and service of automobiles. The subject property has blank access easement and utility easements. Uh, over the Audi parcel property, as you can see, the, the gray highlighted area on Exhibit eight-two is the access drive that's shared by both the subject property and, uh, the Audi property. Um, and then further to the east end of, uh, Lot four point oh three, that thirty-five by two-hundred foot piece of property, you can see there's a, a little angled, uh, section in there. Um, there is, uh, some drainage easements as well as access easements over that property. So we do have, uh, the ability to access Edwards Road, uh, and access the site. The subject property is about three acres, two point nine six acres total. Um, you know, we've heard a lot about the proposed, uh, plan, I'll just run through it really quickly. Again, um, we're going to be converting the Land Rover sales and service to Honda service only. Uh, we'll be removing, uh, one thousand five hundred and thirty square foot of drive-in canopy, which is that first, uh, orange area shown, is a smaller drive-in canopy section in there. That'll be removed and replaced with a larger orange area, which is three thousand five hundred and ninety-six square feet. And we'll be able to deal with ten cars to drop off and pick up if needed in that, in that area. Obviously, when it's snowing or raining out, we're not gonna make the customers walk, uh, to get their cars. We'll bring them into the drop-off and pickup area so that they don't have to walk out in the parking lot in climate weather. Um, we'll also be, uh, expanding the width of the building to the south. The larger portion of our addition will be a hundred and sixty-foot expansion of the building and that'll house the, uh, the service bays and car wash. And that additional alone is twelve thousand six hundred and fifty-nine, uh, square feet. Um, also to the northwest, we have a smaller five hundred and seventy-nine square foot addition, uh, that was earlier discussed. Um, and then when completed, the, uh, entire addition, uh, the building will be thirty-one thousand, uh, nine hundred and forty-eight square feet. Uh, we'll have twenty-nine service bays and in those twenty-nine service bays, five of those will be those express bays uh, that Mr. Barlow's discussed. Um, some modifications to the existing parking and lighting are required. Uh, we are taking up some of the parking lot of the buildings and modifying some of the islands. Um, the, the lighting itself, uh, we've measured in the field, uh, it used to be a car dealership. So car dealerships are really well lit and this is, uh, this is the same, it's, it's really well lit. We're maintaining the spacing of the lighting, we're moving some poles around. So our lighting is going to be, uh, very well lit and matching to what exists out there today. Uh, we didn't feel that it was necessary to do a whole lighting plan for that. Um, we will meet the minimum, uh, lighting requirements around the entire property. And then, uh, based on the point, the planners' report, uh, an analysis was done regarding the required number of parking spaces. And it's actually, based on that analysis, it's actually been increased from seventy-two to a hundred and twenty spaces, which modifies our EV parking requirements, that's a state law, that we have to provide a certain number of EV spaces as well as, uh, handicap parking spaces. But in comparing, um, the existing parking, uh, which is a hundred and eighty-three, we'll now have a hundred and sixty-five actual parking spaces, uh, on the site. So we're reducing the total number of parking spaces that exist today by a little less than twenty. Um, so with respect to the EV spaces, we have one, uh, box shown, which would service two cars. So they put the EV box and it will service two parking spaces, so you put that box in between the two spaces. Um, so as discussed earlier tonight, we'd like to hardwire two of those boxes so we can service four cars, which is the requirement. But given the trend that there are going to be more electrical vehicles, we wanna have make-ready spaces for four more. So we'll build, we'll build two stations and we wanna be able to build two more in the future. We'd like to get that approved, it's not currently shown on our plan that way, but the change in, uh, parking spaces require us to increase it. And then based on our preliminary meetings before this meeting tonight, we discovered that we really oughta show more parking in there as the trend for electrical vehicles is going to increase. Um, we also showed two handicap parking spaces on our plan and now that the number of spaces has increased to a hundred and twenty, we will actually need five handicap parking spaces. We wanna put those five handicap parking spaces as close to the front door as possible and that meets the, uh, ADA code. Also within the ordinance, we're required to have a, a loading space. Uh, we're showing, uh, along the side, the infamous side, uh, west side of the building, um, we are providing a twelve by fifty-five foot loading space. And in the ordinance, it says if you're providing a loading space that's fifty-five feet, you really need to show that it's a hundred and ten feet. So the thought being is that a truck would, would need that space to pull in and back up into, uh, a loading bay. And in this particular instance, we have that one-way access drive, so the truck can pull by the space and it can back into that loading space, we don't need that extra, uh, loading area. And, and I agree with Mr. Meth, I think probably, you know, you can put up all the signs you want, but the speed bump is probably the thing that's gonna slow people down, uh, when you get to that little bump out there. So I think that's, that's a good suggestion. Uh, we've relocated the dumpster, dumpster's in the, the back right corner or in the back, I guess, westerly corner of the building. As you can see, it's right next to those, uh, uh, those storage facilities for Cube Smart, um, surrounded on the, the west and the south. Uh, we've proposed a chain link, black chain link, uh, enclosure area and it'll have a fabric screen on it so you won't be able to see the dumpster, um, so there'll be no impact visually to any of our neighbors as a result of the dumpster, we thought that was a, an excellent location for the dumpster. Um, we do have, uh, four elevated block areas that were, uh, used to show the agility of Land Rover vehicles. Uh, they had them displayed throughout the site, those four areas will be removed. Um, as requested, we've added in a sidewalk along, uh, Route forty-six. Uh, as mentioned, the Route forty-six signs to be resurfaced and it's got, it's pre-existing non-conforming, a hundred and twenty-eight square feet, or fifty's allowed, sixteen feet high or six feet's allowed, seven point eight feet from the right away where fifteen is allowed. So those are all pre-existing non-conforming conditions for the sign and we're just going to resurface the sign and keep it the exact location and the exact size. We'll be adding some, uh, fresh landscaping in the new islands and within the foundation areas and there's that landscape that will complement. The other, uh, existing landscape areas that are to remain, um, didn't feel that landscape architect was required for this type of, uh, facility. Um, we are proposing some Sergeant Junipers, uh, dwarf red spikes, Sierra, uh, variegated lily turf, um, some taller shrubs, uh, such as, uh, Fyzer, uh, Junipers and double file Viburnum we'll use, uh, along the sides of the buildings where there are no windows, help break up the, uh, the building masses. Um, so as a result of the projects, we do have a slight increase in stormwater runoff. Uh, it's one thousand three hundred and seventy-five square feet. Uh, given the amount of disturbance and the small increase in coverage, we're considered to be a minor project relative to New Jersey State Stormwater Regulations, which means that we would, we have designed the stormwater in accordance with our Sippany requirements. And in doing that, we've, we've been required to have two drywells, uh, and they're placed underground near the front, uh, drop-off and pickup area. So that area, the roof is gonna be directed, uh, into those drywells and collected in that area and infiltrated into the ground. And then there'll be an overflow of those into the existing storm drain that's directly adjacent to that. Um, so, uh, also in, uh, going through, uh, our application, uh, before the meeting, we noticed that the definition of soil movement included rocks. And we have those four, uh, rock areas that need to be, those display areas that need to be moved and they're supported by soil. So that puts us into a major, uh, soil-moving permit. So we thought that it would make sense, since the, the board engineer doesn't regulate the soil-moving permit, the township engineer will get this before a building permit's issued and review that and we, we got caught a couple of times in that loop and we just wanna make sure that we're covered as far as the soil-moving permit. So when we do actually go for a building permit, we don't get kicked back at the last minute to have to come back here for such a small, uh, amount of soil that needs to be moved. So.
And it's partic- it's particular to these, uh, the display courses for the Land Rover.
Primarily that's the soil, there is a few others, so our total soil movements, five hundred yards and a major soil movement application of a hundred cubic yards. So we have three hundred and ninety cubic yards of cut, mostly is, uh, those rock ramps, the excavation for the drywells and excavation for stormwater piping. It's three hundred and ninety cubic yards, so that alone puts us over, the way they, way it's done in precipities, um, you, you double count it. So if we were gonna use that material and put it in and use it for fill, we would also count that as extra yardage. So there's a hundred and ten cubic yards in the ramp areas going into the car wash and into the service area and then the, uh, service bay exiting, building those ramps up, which has to be a hundred and ten cubic yards or so. So that, adding those cut and the fill together gets us to five hundred cubic yards. So, so, you know, most likely, the excavation that we will use will be used for those ramps. So the amount of material to be removed from the site, um, may not be anything because we will be filling for the slab area for the building in the back. Probably use a lot of that material, uh, to be placed within that. But if we just used it for the ramps alone, we'd end up with removing about two hundred and eighty cubic yards of soil, which is a very small amount of material. Uh, so we request that soil-moving, that soil-moving permit. Uh, with respect to variances, we do have a planner tonight that's gonna talk about variances. I just wanted to mention them and get them on the record. Uh, building coverage is, uh, twenty percent is allowed. Uh, we're proposing twenty-four point eight percent. And, uh, we were actually noticing that, if you look at the Audi building and then you look at the proposed new building, lots are about the same size and shape and those buildings are almost identical. We took that Audi building and placed it on top of our new proposed building, it's incredibly similar. Uh, just wanted to mention that. Uh, the loading space, as I mentioned, is a variance, uh, for signage, oh, we have, uh, wall signage variance. Uh, there's some testimony, uh, by Mr. Barlow's architect, we have four signs, we're allowed one sign, um, uh, in the zone uh, along the face. Um, the, uh, the north service drive through sign is, uh, we're allowed forty-nine point five square feet based on the size of that wall and we're proposing sixty-five point five square feet. Um, there's also sign height on the building, which is the, uh, existing. Is, this, this Honda sign is exceeding the height requirement, that structure already exists. Um, and the sign height allowed is twenty-five feet and that sign's thirty-one point five feet. So that's my, uh, direct testimony.
Well, I'd just like to put a finer point on that soil permit, that's something we discovered at the last minute. Honestly thought that was structure, not soil in that Land Rover display. So we would need to amend for the soil-moving permit with the conditions that we file the application for soil-moving permit and pay the fees immediately, follow all the recommendations of the township attorney with regards to the soil-moving permit. You heard the testimony regarding which is gonna be done with the soil. We don't, so this isn't a normal situation where trucks are coming in and off of the site. So we would ask that we amend for that based upon those conditions to bring everything back up to speed and our compliance with all the recommendations of the township engineer, which are pretty standard. This board has seen those in the board. We will certainly comply with all of that, based upon all that, so.
Okay. Members of the board, have any questions on this testimony at this time?
Uh, I do, but I'll, I'll yield to anybody else who wants it first, it's gonna be a while.
You're gonna be a while, then, then let me ask a question that was pointed out to me in looking at your, uh, Plan A-one. I don't know what, uh, and you may not be, it may actually have been a prior person that's the right person. It was pointed out to me that perhaps. A-one.
Your A-one in your set.
A-one in the set, this one. There we go, it was, the question that came to mind when looking at this is whether. It was, the question that came to mind when looking at this is whether or not, because you have the exit between Spaces 13 and 14, wouldn't it be easier to make Space 7, or 6, or 5 the exit from the facility, so that you're away from that oil storage facility?
That's definitely more of an interior layout issue.
I get that, and I understand that there may still be good reasons why you'd want to do that, but you eliminate a problem by moving the exit from the facility further to, we'll call it, to the south. And you gain the spot back by taking the spot between 13 and 14 and making it another bay.
Well, one thing is then you get into the way of the...
Well, can we, we have a, can we take a brief...
You want to take a brief break?
I want to take a brief break so we can discuss it internally.
All right. Let's take a five-minute break, and we'll be back, and they can have their own internal discussions, and see if that works. Thank you.
Here.
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 Present.
Here.
Here.
Here. All right, sir. You've had a chance to discuss this amongst yourselves.
Yeah, I'll answer it from operations. So, a couple of things. I kind of want to go back to this drive anyway and the usage. I mean, as far as deliveries and trucks or any of that stuff that we get, parts delivery is when we're not open. It's in the middle of the night, guy comes in, he has a key to the lock thing, puts the things in and closes it, so that's not during the day. During the day, you might get a FedEx or UPS attire delivery. So you probably get one or two of those, maybe three in a day, of those type of trucks going down there. That'd be a lot, probably, right? And then there's also, like, the oil, to fill the oil tanks and take the waste oil out. Those come, like, once a week, and washer fluid, oh, that comes once a week. So as far as truck flow, you know, car flow through there, it's rare that there'll be stuff going down that side. I don't even, you know, the Audi building has the same one-way on its one side also. Never really actually had a problem. And really, the problem with putting a door here now is really the flow and the danger to the employees, because this way, all cars go this way. Once you put it here, all these people have to start coming back this way to get out. Cars are going this way and this way now in this section. Parts are up here, so all these mechanics have to walk here to get parts and back with parts, tires, big parts, all through this section, alignment racks that people are on and getting off. They've now got to look both ways. It adds a lot more danger inside the shop, I think, for us and my employees, when I know coming out this way, there's almost nothing ever coming this way. Plus, if you put a stop sign, a speed bump, and all the other things, I really feel like that would be more than enough and better for my employees than having two-way flow traffic inside the shop.
Okay, fair enough. But, you know, you answered my question as to why, and it makes sense.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Gordon, you had a list.
Okay, so, Mr. Walker, so getting to the building coverage for a minute. So from what I understand, you're 6,200 square feet approximately over what you're permitted?
Yeah, that's approximately correct, yes.
Okay. And just looking at these plans and what you've got, so this extra oil storage room is 579, and the canopy is 3,600, correct?
Yes.
All right. I mean, does the canopy actually have to be enclosed with doors in front? It can't just be open air with a roof?
Yeah, I think the trend is, because of the inclement weather, is to have it totally enclosed. So it seals, the door seals, it's zero degrees out. The people who write up the vehicles come out to the people in the car, they walk around the car together, make sure there's a gang or something in the car, that everybody recognizes that. So it's definitely a major trend in automotive, the number of car dealerships.
Okay. The Audi dealership is enclosed, right next door.
Is it? Okay.
And it would still be building coverage if you were to whether it has...
No. It'd be, it'd be building coverage if it was open to air, it wouldn't be mass, shall we say, you know, from the perspective of the street. That's all. That's all I was asking.
Okay.
All right, but you're still 6,200 square feet over, correct?
I haven't done the calculations, but it sounds approximately that.
Okay. Now, Mr. DeDich brought this up earlier, the fact that everybody, and we talked about operations, customers have to cross to this parking lot frequently, right? I see a lot of open pavement right by the driveway. Is there any way to split that up a little bit with islands and maybe put a crosswalk in? So, yeah, thanks for bringing that exhibit up. Right by those two arrows that point into the, where you drop off your cars, that's where customers come out and then will be heading straight to the parking lot, correct?
Correct.
So is there any way to maybe put an island between the entrance to the service bays and the parking rows and a crosswalk or two, just a crosswalk to get people across safely?
Yeah. The crosswalk's no problem. I think the other thing you got to look at here as well is, like, the first entrance into the site off from Route 46, the majority of people who pull in there are going to be heading towards the, heading towards the drop-off area, right? The enclosed drop-off areas. So there's really no conflict with people crossing the parking lot in that area, right? And then there are little or few people who are parking in the front parking area. Sometimes you get people dropping off and picking up, but they also would not cross there. They would exit out. We have a separate exit near our first entranceway. So they actually would not cross the pedestrian traffic in that area. So the majority of people pulling in are going into that covered area, then they're going to drop off their vehicle, and this vehicle is going to be picked up by a serviceman, either brought immediately into service or parked into a parking spot outside. So this entire conflict has been eliminated by the fact that people are going in and out of the enclosed area.
I'm actually more worried about the conflict with people coming in the entrance and heading into that service area while other customers are trying to get out, walk back and forth to the parking lot. So I'm more worried about the crossing of the line, more or less the line for the, to go into where the addition for the car drop-off is. And part of the reason is, you got to think, at some point, there may be cars sitting there waiting and people going between them, and if somebody's pulling in to go into the parking aisle instead of there, they may not see somebody coming out.
So we're talking about putting in some crosswalks?
Correct. Or further back, well, I guess I'm more worried about the one by the front, but I'm thinking maybe even further back and have an island separating the drop-off area. Keep going with your pen. Just go from where the green, the shrubs are, next to the addition. Go straight back from there into the parking lot and put an island where somebody can wait.
And expand this island out?
Exactly.
Okay.
So that there's a place, a refuge for pedestrians to be able to see oncoming traffic and vice versa.
And a little sidewalk.
Correct.
And then we could add the strike in here as well, if someone comes out. Okay. So this would, you'd like this to be 30 feet?
You're the designer, it's your site.
Okay.
Do whatever you have for vehicle circulation.
All right, well, that's my problem.
And I guess the last question I have has to do with, with the use changing and the square footage increasing dramatically. Have you applied for an access permit from the DOT?
We are, we are in the middle of it. We're trying to get some information from the township on previous DOT access permits for the site. We have been working on it, so.
But you have, you are going to the DOT.
We have two points of ingress and egress, so that really helps our situation, but we also have to look at the lock conformity, you know, and look at, you know, the fact that we have two points of ingress and egress, or secondary point of ingress and egress, really helps out our ability with the traffic, increased, that increased traffic on the site with the increase in the number of vehicles. So we came from 18 to 29, I think?
Well, you're also changing the use technically.
Yeah, the use is changing.
Because the current use would be dealership. This is changing to service center. So that's a, that's a change in use, so that's going to have a trip generation impact, at least on paper.
Understood.
Yes, okay, no, that's why I'm asking. So you're not seeking just a letter of no interest? You're going to seek an actual flex?
We are seeking a letter of no interest.
Oh, okay.
But we are going to provide the chip, trip generations for both uses to support it.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Other members of the board, Mr. Neeling, through chairman.
Mr. O'Neil, I'm looking at Sheet 4 of 9, and looking at that driveway, which is up at the, let's say, the western or the northern part of the building, and it appears that it's too narrow for fire equipment to get in there. Has District 5 sent you any communication as to whether they approve of what I see as a narrow spot where the proposed addition would be? It looks like it's way less than 24 feet. Have you received anything from District 5?
Well, he's looking at that. There's actually a one-way driveway width requirement in the code that's 12 feet, and in that area, we've proposed the driveway to be 15 feet, and it's one-way in that section.
Jennifer, as you recall, is that adequate, or maybe Mr. DePiero might avail himself of his knowledge regarding fire, or Mr. Canjiano?
Well, I just want to comment that they provided a truck circulation plan for the track and trailer WP-50, and it maneuvers that one way, if that seems to help.
So it is adequate?
And the fire district did not comment. They're not on that coverage.
They have not, sorry. It might be a good idea to get in touch with District 5 and at least give them the opportunity to say whether they agree with this or not. We usually do that with all applications.
Well, they've had the opportunity. They haven't done.
I pointed out to you, Mr. Mel, that in the past, you may remember, the fire department does not like bringing its equipment up next to buildings where the event is occurring. So it's probably likely they would not be trying to traverse that area if the building was engaged.
Yeah. It's obviously adequate enough on the other side.
They can get, yeah, they can get around on the other side. They're not going to be pulling the equipment up.
Right, okay, thank you.
Other members of our board have questions on this?
Actually, I had one I forgot. How many parking spaces are proposed right now? I thought you heard said 120, correct?
165.
Okay.
165, but we actually take credit for four EV spaces, so the calculation's actually 169, but we only have 165.
I was just confused when you talked about 120 and only five ADA spots, because I, I mean, in my impression, if they're all open to the public, you're going to have to base the ADA.
No, they're storage spaces, they're not active spaces. Spaces for loaner vehicles, there are spaces for cars that need to be fixed or repaired. So the active spaces are the 100.
Okay.
But while we were talking, you know, we actually, you know, we were talking about access off from Edwards Road, and really thought that it would make sense to add some directional signs, just to keep the flow of the site the way that we intended. So we'd like to add in three directional signs onto our site plan to just say, you know, Honda Service, Honda Service, and then Honda Service here, so we get the flow happening the way that we want it to go. We thought, you know, thought when we were having our five-minute break, that discussion came up, so they would just be simple, small directional signs.
Internal signs.
Internal signs.
Are some of them going to have to be on your neighbor's property? And I understand they're in a common ownership.
We have, well, we have common access, access easements, utility easements.
No, does it allow you to put signs up on their property?
It does now.
Mr. Canjiano, you had a...
Yeah, I just wanted to go over several items. First, we had you originally submitted, and earlier in the year, we wrote a letter April of 2022, and you recently, in late December, just a month ago or so, resubmitted a set of plans. The board doesn't have the, did not get copies from the applicant of those plans, but we did review those plans, and you did, you gave us a, Mr. O'Neil's office gave us a letter of response, and you generally addressed many of the comments, and so that's not an issue. But I had several items that I did want to go over. And just to follow on Mr. Metz, the access permit will be a condition of approval. We can't grant, we won't give a compliance, resolution compliance without the DOT, either a letter of no interest or the permit. And just as far as the ADA, number of spaces, just for clarity, that is a, that's not a board requirement, that is a federal and state requirement. So we'll leave, if you're not going to comply with the standard ADA spaces based on 165 spaces, give us a breakdown of your rationale with citation table, if you're going to not give the full number of spaces based on 165 spaces. Big, we've already had a significant discussion on the site distance exiting the building, and we talked about that, so we won't have to rehash that anymore. One of our earlier comments, you had the dumpster, maybe you want to testify to the board where it is, but this current plan for the, is the revised plan that was submitted in December.
Correct.
Originally, you had the dumpster in the southwest corner of the property, and we, yeah, we commented on that, not that it was a problem with that location, but the property line is a very interesting piece of property, and I know you touched on it. The property line is, is not the rear of the parking lot. The property line is in, I don't know how many feet it's in, and there would, you didn't have the required rear yard setback for the dumpster. The current location of the dumpster is actually, in my opinion, more problematic than where it was, requiring the variance. The current location of the dumpster is just at the exit point for the car wash, and that's a tight, I saw here and I verified it, for passenger vehicle, it does make the maneuver. It is a tight maneuver, but with the dumpster there, you have swinging doors, the dumpster. If the doors aren't closed properly, the wind grabs them, you got a conflict. And so our concern is having that dumpster right near that pinch point with the car wash exit.
Yeah, so let's talk about that for a second, because that's a good point. But, I mean, your suggestion of moving it from here is a good one. We do have self-storage buildings next to us, so if we could slide this dumpster back against the property line, there's an existing fence there, that would eliminate any conflict. That would give us more room to make that turn if we move there.
I...
Four does no problem.
I would be against violating the side yard setback with accessory structure and almost, would be more in favor of the rear yard setback, since your property really, utilizing the property goes well, goes into that easement in the rear. If your, your, your usage of the property goes beyond your property line. And, but if you left a dumpster there, I'm just noting that that is a very busy corner, and now you're adding a dumpster to that corner, just don't think, from an engineering, just engineering judgment, it's not, it's not a great location.
Right, it is a good point, you know, the amount of service. So, yeah, so let's move it back to where it was then and seek that.
So maybe you give some testimony on the location it's going to go for the board.
Sure. So this is the, this is what?
Do you have a plan of the prior submission on, at a board now?
Well, the rest of the board does.
Here's the prior.
Do you have the prior?
Yeah, exactly.
These are all the sheets of the prior.
Because Mr. Walker forgot to give us new plans. Yeah.
Okay, so, as I mentioned before, this lot, 4.03, is this narrow thirty-five-foot by two-hundred-foot lot. Has no curage, but it has all kinds of eastings over it. So seemingly, our property line runs on this white line. And our parking expands well over the property line into the parking and access easement that's on the other property. So originally, we had the dumpster proposed in this location in the back corner on the subject property, but on the property line. So seemingly, it would appear that it's well within the setback because we have this access and parking easement. So I think, you know, after hearing Andrew's comment, that it does make sense to relocate the dumpster back into that area. If the board is good with that, we would request a variance to be, be basically on that rear property with the dumpster. Mr. Metz?
With the chairman's permission, I have a whole different question. Who owns that lot? This landlocked lot?
HP Realty.
So not the same, it's not under common ownership?
I think it is, 189 Route 46.
If you merge that lot with this lot as part of this application, how much could you reduce your building coverage by? The, the building coverage that needs a variance, just?
Yeah, you'd have two principal uses on the same lot. And you need a variance for that.
Oh, really?
Yes.
Would you need the alley or what else they have in that lot? It's just driveway, right?
No, I thought that was...
Is it just driveway?
It's just driveway. No, I think so.
Because it's not a structural...
No, no, it's, no, that's another lot. This is the lot.
Four oh, it's four oh three, what, four oh three?
Does it, does it just sound?
Okay, but it's not just the alley, it's this piece of the, this is the easement.
Okay, so you're not talking about this?
This is the...
You're talking about just this piece?
Yes.
So it's about seven thousand square feet. And, you know, not exactly, but very close. And building coverage is point-two percent. So we pick up fourteen hundred square feet of building coverage. And you mentioned that we are about sixty-two hundred square feet over on building coverage. So it would reduce it, you know, back to forty-eight hundred square feet over. So it wouldn't fix the problem?
It wouldn't fix the problem, but it fixes the fact of having a separate lot that is totally landlocked, that serves almost no good purpose, and is effectively being used by this property in its entirety.
Where would you buy it from?
Well, apparently, then, if they're under common ownership...
It has all kinds of easements over it.
It goes all over here, right?
Yeah.
But two lots of common ownership merge as one during the zoning anyway, don't they?
Only if they're not conforming lots.
Isn't that other lot not conforming? Landlocked lots not conforming. Can't be conforming, it's camping.
You know, I'm going to caution my client because these are subject to a lot of cross-easements that I don't have with me tonight.
Okay, look, it was just a question.
So it's going to have to do a lot of redrawing.
My recollection of Lockner is correct. I think they have to be two non-conforming lots on the same ownership and unimproved.
Right.
Okay.
So you have an improved lot here. So I don't, and again, it has an automatic merger. Again, you're getting into some complicated situation. So that was my recollection of that Lockner requirement that it automatically merged. That would, that would not be the case here because number one, you do have a conforming lot. And your lot is conforming. And number two, it's improved. Yeah. So I think you have some issues there, at least with automatic mergers.
Yep.
So in any case, you're moving, you're moving the...
Back to the dumpster.
The dumpster in the back, in the corner. How does that affect your parking there? Because I must admit, I didn't study the old plans.
Yeah, so we would be, we would be losing a couple of parking spaces back there.
Maybe they can keep that one.
We'd be losing three parking spaces.
Well, they're not really parking spaces. Didn't you testify they're storage?
Some will, some won't. Maybe it's a management...
One way or another, you're well overparked for your requirement, right?
Probably gain one parking space.
They heat the, they heat the storage.
Well, it won't be used for infantry, infantry storage. We went through that already.
We had a wildly successful preparation.
Can you gain a parking space in the area that you'll be losing the dumpster or not?
No, we didn't, we did not. There's not enough room in there to go.
No, but we're solving Mr. Canjiano's traffic movement problem.
So, well, the board, whatever the board wants to consider for that. But moving on, the, we talked about the ADA, number of ADA spaces needs to be in compliance. Revise your plan to include the additional EV and make ready spaces you testified to. We touched on the, can you just go back? I'm not clear on the customers. It's clear, they pull in, they drop off their vehicle, they walk into the lobby, and they wait for their car. But they, some of them will go out again and get a loner car. Or some, or all of them will go back out again and pick up their car. Can you show us on the plan where they'll be exiting the building and where the loner cars are going to be and their, their completed cars? So I'm trying to get to where the pedestrians are going to be crossing the parking lot. I'm not exactly clear on that.
Yeah, so from the waiting room exiting out, they're going to exit out this way here, pick up their car. So with this island and possibly relocating crosswalk or having a crosswalk closer to the building, probably having the crosswalk closer to the building would make most sense. Someone who's coming out this main door in the, in this area, they can come out and cross the night area. So coming out this door, going across...
So if I understand your testimony, every customer will have to cross in front of the, those two inflow to cross the, that drop-off area and then cross the parking lot?
Yes, if they're coming from the waiting area.
Well, they all have to come from the waiting area.
Not necessarily. They could go from the waiting area into the service area and into the enclosed area and pick up their vehicle in the enclosed area if it's in climate weather.
Oh, in some cases, the vehicles are picked up in the enclosed area? In some cases, they're parked to be picked up outside?
Correct.
Okay. So in either case, to follow Mr. Metz's comment, I'm calling a refuge island, either a peninsula-type, some kind of bollmost type, some, some kind of refuge island so that the pedestrian doesn't have to walk in the pavement. And, and he has a refuge point after he crosses the two lanes in front of the enclosure and can stop and take a look at traffic crossing as he's going to cross the, the two-way aisle.
Go and already took care of that.
Yep. Just wanted to make sure that the applicant understood what our goal was. And the sidewalk, a sidewalk was added in your December submission. Thank you.
Yep.
It's kind of sidewalk and sidewalk to nowhere on the west side. And on the east side, it's a sidewalk to a full-height curb. As you know, we should, we shouldn't prohibit people with disabilities from getting on a sidewalk. So you should have an accessible curb ramp on the side by the driveway entrance. And I'll ask, I don't know if you had any discussions with the adjoining property owner, if you could get rights to build a sidewalk on, and make the sidewalk continuous and not have a gap, that small gap behind you. So I'll ask if, if you guys are agreeable to at least have any discussion with the neighbor to see if you can make the sidewalk extend to where their sidewalk ends.
Well, I will point out, and I, this kind of goes to the last question also. The notice right now and the jurisdiction of the board is over the lot 4.01. So I can't really make commitments regarding calling the neighbors that we're going to be able to get a sidewalk on their property because it's not subject to what we're talking about. The same way trying to merge a lot not under notice would be very difficult in front of the board because of jurisdictional problems.
Well, I...
So we'll make a call.
Yes, that's right. And this is for good design and, and not bad design. We're not, I'm not making you make the sidewalk connection. I'm asking to have a, so that the sidewalk, someone's not walking through the mud for five feet.
Fifteen, fifteen feet.
Fifteen feet.
It's odd that they didn't build up to their property.
Right, it is. So that was trying to correct whatever, whatever, whatever happened.
That was before the board recently, though, wasn't it? The expansion on that CubeSmart?
It was not that recent. It was several years ago. And the idea was that, I think, at the time, they said that they couldn't complete this piece and just make a small piece on that island. And the engineer at the time said, okay, fine.
So they committed to it?
Whoever that may be. What?
You're saying they committed to do it?
Well, they, they, at the time, on their site plan, they agreed to build a sidewalk. To avoid having to go to DOT to deal with a permit, they put it on their property instead of on the public right of way. And because, they, they said that going past their driveway was going to be a problem because it would just be a small little piece. So the engineer let them off, from my understanding.
All right.
All right, so, so moving along.
But Mr. O'Neal, to your point about that we're dealing with Lot 4.01, aren't there improvements in front of us on Lot 4.03?
There are now.
There were, but aren't, didn't the site plan extend, the parking lot extend into Lot 4.03?
Yes, yes, it does.
So we...
But there's no change.
It was just striping.
Subject to the easement.
So the striping, that's an improvement, is it not?
You're putting in parking stalls that weren't there as well. The pavement was there, but not the parking stalls.
So to your point that we're only here to discuss Lot 4.01, I would, I would question our attorney about whether that's correct.
Well, you're asking the difference here because with regard to the sidewalk, you're mandating as a condition of approval that they contact the property owner and extend the sidewalk. There's no mandate on that portion of the site plan with regard to that property. Essentially, the jurisdiction ends with regard to conditions at the property line. So there's been no mandate that they stripe that. That would be where the board then might go over its boundaries. So again, I agree with counsel that we cannot make them do it as a condition. However, we can make a suggestion that has good civic design. It is completed. That's the difference we're in there.
Understood, thank you.
All right.
And then there were some comments from, we had the same similar comment and then from the sewer department on the reclamation tanks. I think for clarity, I saw that you put, you have them on the architectural drawing and the reclamation tank for the car wash, the reuse, reuse of the water for the car wash. The tanks are within the building, they're within the car wash. I think for clarity, I'll ask that if you could just identify that they're within the building there in some way, a note or a graphic of some kind. But I see the sewer department, they had, they issued their letter in January 21st, 2022, wanted to know what was going on with the car wash and, and the tanks. So we just want to give a little testimony on what the, how the functionality is going to be with these, where they're going to be tied into. And are they tying into the sewer? And they want to know the gallonage and the like.
Yeah, so we have, within the proposed addition itself in the area where the service spaces are going, there are no floor drains at all within the service area. We do have two floor drains within the car wash. So the water coming off the car wash ends up getting collected. And it runs through an oil-water separator before it's discharged into a sewer line that connects to the municipal sewer system. That's the way the system is designed to work. Our architect may be able to provide more details relative to the exact system itself. But that's my understanding of how that system's going to work. We do show the oil-water separator on the outside of our building.
So is the oil-water separator connected to the reclamation tanks for the car wash? The reused water for the car wash?
I don't believe the water is reused. Our architect can discuss that with a little bit more detail.
So there's, there's no reuse of the car wash water?
Our architect will...
Okay. That is a big, it's, it's not really a concern of mine as a, for the board, but it's maybe a concern for the water department because your gallonage would go way up. If, and you call that reclamation thing. So I don't know if the architect wants to comment on it, if this, if this is a recirculating car wash system or that uses fresh potable water with each wash.
They're not recycling the water.
You're not?
We're just, we're just purifying from the oil and then sending it to the sewer.
Okay, well, then, when you do, that's, that's fine. So you'll need to include, if that is included in going down the sewer, you're going to have to have that, those numbers for the sewer department and for the water department.
Obviously, depending on the cost of our connection, extension, connection permit, due to the change, may change the need to put in the reclamation tanks. So there is a fee associated with the amount of water that you use.
I'm just surprised you don't have the reclamation system. But that's, that's up to you. Talked about the ADA, the ramp at the continuation of your sidewalk. I think that's everything. Thank you.
Okay. Other members of the board have questions?
Just a quick one, I don't know if you can answer, but how many gallons per day is this car wash going to use on average?
I don't know.
Is there other service centers you have that have a similar capacity? This is the only one in the area?
Can't answer that question. I don't know.
Uh, there's, there's no other service centers with the car wash attached to it?
I'm sure there are, there's a lot of.
Okay. Okay, I know there's a note here about being over 1,500 gallons per day.
I could respond, and we do have one of the new Jaguar.
Right. Okay. So it's here, it says 1,500 gallons not available at this time due to court-deposed scarce resource order.
Oh yeah, it's a scarce resource, so it's, uh, yeah. So it's, it's, it's actually a potential issue for us to be able to utilize, put the car wash online if we exceed, uh, 500 gallons per day. Because 1,500 is a max, so they multiply the actual gallonage by three. So we have to do backward calculations. Actually, I have a call set up with the water department tomorrow to discuss that in detail, to see how that's going to impact us and to see where they are in the process of resolving this issue as well. This has been ongoing for almost a year. Well, it's gotten no better because of the affordable housing mandates. They have first crack on the water. Um, I'm concerned about you using all that water and not recycling it. Big time.
You may find that you have to.
Right.
So.
Very well, yeah. I mean, there's a chance that we could get approved, but we can't, we could build it, but we can't use it until we resolve the water situation.
That may very well be. If you build it, they can't come.
Right.
Mr. Zadich, you had a.
Yeah, a couple of quick questions. And I, I apologize if I mixed up my numbers. Somewhere I, in the testimony, I heard we will have five ADA spaces?
Correct.
Correct, right. So, and where that, those would be, right there where there two are? Right, next to those two?
They could be located in the front of the.
Right. And then I also heard that there'll be four, uh, EV stations, right?
There's going to be.
Four, two boxes, four spaces, right?
Correct, and we're also going to have two, two other boxes that are make-ready. So we'll put the electrical cable in and then when those are needed, structures will be put on there.
Okay, and where those first four would be, same place?
We want, we'd like to put those in this area.
Okay. All right, that's what I was calculating because there are only seven spaces. If we do five ADA, then how the EV would work?
To follow up on that, at least one of the EV spaces is going to have, have to be accessible too.
That's correct. Right, once you go over a certain number, you need to provide an ADA space.
So at least.
That may impact the number of EV units that we put up.
As long as it comply.
So at least two of them would be, would have to be on this side?
Yes.
Adjacent to the building, yeah?
Possibly if, if we get to that limit, if we stay under that limit. I don't know what the number is. Do you know what the number is?
Over 101, you're going to need an accessible space.
That's.
With the EV.
Yeah.
We need one.
Yep, so that, that needs to be taken care of. The, um, second question. Generally speaking, would the customers be walking across in the parking lot on the far left?
So customers, customers are really going to be.
Yeah, so that part's fine, I think we discussed that enough, yeah, yeah. I'm worried about if they have to walk across the far left parking spot.
No, they're going to be picking up, they're going to be picking up in this area. They're not going to be blocking back here. That's all staff.
So the cars which will be repaired will not be parked in that area for them to come and pick up later? They all will be parked in this side?
Cars will be brought up into this front bay.
Okay.
Or they'll be brought into the pickup drop off area.
Okay. Okay, and then, again, just, just tagging along on that water thing, um, I think we definitely, definitely should look into recycling the water. Again, just nature of, you know, what we can do for.
Understood.
Thank you.
Any other members of the board have questions? Any members of our?
I have a couple.
Yes.
All right, so we're moving the dumpster enclosure.
Yes.
How are we treating it? Are we doing fencing, landscaping, something to make it aesthetically pleasing?
Well, we're, we're going to have it screened, so it's a, so it's a black chain link fence with fabric, wrapped in fabric, so you don't see the dumpster.
I personally don't find that aesthetically pleasing. I don't know how the board feels about that, but. A solid vinyl fence is much better. Easy enough.
I mean, no, we'll see, it's just a storage.
Someone will see it. Um, so we have the area where it's moving from, how are we treating that? Is it going to continue to be, looks like it's striped? Um, will it continue to be striped or will it be a landscaped area? How are you?
Uh, it's not going to be a landscaped area, it's in the back of the shop. There's no customers going back there and it's surrounded by self-storage buildings.
Okay.
It's going to be sitting on top of the pavement.
And, um, final question I had was about parking again. Is there signage proposed to show where the, um, customer should be parking, employee should be parking? Can there be signage?
Or are you just going to mark the stalls?
Mark stalls.
You know, number the customer stalls or whatever.
Right, and we've designated on our plan, we designated customer parking in this area and through here. So the board feels that we need to provide a sign to show customer parking.
It may just be a directional sign when you come in, where do you go?
Well, most people are. Everybody pulls up the parking to the right, they don't go to the drive-in. Everybody's pulling in here with the car to be served is going to that door. That's most of the reason, right? And then if you're coming to pick up, you're naturally going to park. If you're coming to pick someone up or pick up or park, you're naturally going to park in the front.
You can always say something like customer parking only installs 1 through 30, or whatever the number happens to be. You know, the testimony in the front is they're using it for people coming in to the service area. They're using it for some EV vehicles, when Honda rolls them out, put them in there. People are coming in to pick up, uh, customers who need rides home or wherever. So the main point of the whole application is to drive everybody to that door in front of that door. And we, our position is anything that distracts from that is not good for site operators. Because we want to bring the cars in, we want them to get to the valets, and we're about to get them sitting in a chair. But when we park, when they pick up their car, they're going to be told it's in parking spot 19, or whatever. Or they're going to, or a valet's going to bring them to the car. Yeah. And, you know, you're going to pick up your car. I, I know there are a lot of Hondas there, but you probably recognize your car. So we can certainly agreeable to do anything, but you know, you reach a point where it becomes self-defeating. And I think the constant directional signs in the front could cause confusion. That's why I would only like markings of the stalls, just number the stalls. I don't care about the signs so much. I think, uh, I think, were we doing that, Mark?
Yeah, I, I think we agreed to that. So I think we can agree to numbering all of these parking spaces here and up in the front as well.
Yeah, we're asking for the, a little variance for the signage to direct everybody into that bag because of the importance of that.
Yep.
So maybe it's pretty clear the front is where most customers are going to park. No one wants to walk all the way from the back of the building, but maybe there, it's labeling somewhere in the back that this is not customer parking. It's employee parking or, um.
Employee access only?
Exactly.
A similar sign to what's on the, uh, west side of the building, on the east side of the building at some point?
Yeah, we have a, on the west side, we have a proposed sign that says one-way employees over, uh, on that area where the speed bumps go down.
You want something on the grid?
We could put another, I mean, it's getting to the point where there might be over-signing. We could put a sign here.
Yeah. We don't want people back there anyway.
Right, it says, you know, employees only.
Okay, do you have anything else?
That's it.
That's it, okay. Any members of the public?
We just confirmed two numbers or a couple of numbers. The parking, you're losing three spaces, so you're going from 167 to 164.
Uh, so the actual number of spaces is 165.
Okay.
So we'll be going from 165 to 162. But we do have bonus spaces based on the EV, which we would pick up eight bonus spaces.
I'm just, this is just for purposes of the resolution, so I'm getting the variances down. Uh, and the, for the garbage, for the refuse, you can be right on the property line, zero feet for both sides.
We'll make it one foot.
One foot, and then it's going to be 10 foot required and six to the side here. So one foot on, okay, thank you, that's all I have.
All right. Any members of the public have any questions of these witnesses at this time hearing and seeing none? Mr. O'Neill?
One witness left.
One left, let's get, let's get her rolling.
He's, he's looking around.
Thought I was going to bring you up.
He's raising his right hand, sir. You swear in front of the testimony you're about to give it would be the truth, the whole truth. I don't think.
I don't.
You guys, name and address for the record, please.
First name is John, last name is Leon Cavallo, it's L-E-O-N-C-A-V as in Victor, A-L-L-L. Uh, my professional, uh, address is 388 Washington Road, St. Louis, New Jersey.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Leon Cavallo, please give the board the benefit of your experience.
Uh, I have, um, a professional planner in St. Louis, New Jersey, I have testified here before. Uh, my license is in good standing, I've testified, uh, in the last couple of years. I believe it's been settled.
I'd submit Mr. Leon Cavallo for expert planning testimony. Anybody have any questions on this, uh, expertise at this time? No? Your, your witness. Mr. Leon Cavallo, you're fully familiar with the application as before the board?
Yes, I am.
You've had the opportunity to examine the local ordinances in the master plan?
Yes.
I wonder if you can give us your findings comparing this application to those documents?
So, you know, I'll try to be quick. I was getting late. Um, the, uh, the lot is, as the engineer testified, is 2.96 acres. The house is the Paul Miller Audi dealership next door, and this is a redo with moving around of some dealerships as testified, uh, by the applicant. Uh, the area is on Route 46, uh, commercial highway. Uh, surrounding areas are predominantly commercial. Uh, the modification, the used auto service building includes additions, renovations, new signage. Uh, and the rear addition is approximately 1,200, 3,65 square feet for additional service space and a side addition of 300, 3,596 square feet for service reception. Uh, zoning is in the highway development district. Uh, permitted uses include auto dealerships, auto repair offices, airports, uh, retail and restaurants, selling performance, uses permitted in the zone and, uh, the projects substantially complies with the load controls. The building height, the building setbacks, floor area, lot coverage and the parking supply all comply.
Would you pull the microphone closer to this?
Sure. The, uh, the building coverage, uh, is, the requirement is 20% and we're proposing 24.8%. Uh, the overall lot coverage, which includes the impervious coverage, is 86.4% versus the requirement of 90%. So we're balancing out the, the, uh, recover, uh, the coverage requirements there. Parking setback, uh, is 5% of five feet, uh, and we're proposing, uh, zero feet relating to a rear easement that's been talked about, uh, in regard to the self-storage use, uh, which is an existing, uh, condition and that's Cube Smart, uh, right next door. Um, load bearing, uh, load berth length, uh, is, uh, 110 feet is required. We're using 55 feet. Uh, the reasoning is that the size is adequate for testimony of the design engineer. Uh, the sign, uh, number is, uh, requirement is one. We're having four, uh, separate signs and, uh, we identified products and services on the, uh, established application. Uh, sign area, uh, is, the requirement is 118.5 square feet. We're having, uh, cumulative amount of 142.5 square feet, uh, which equals 77 plus 65.5, 5 square feet, which is the, uh, amount of 142.5. Uh, the, uh, sign height is greater than 25, uh, feet and it's the same rational, uh, as, as all the signage on the site. Sign, sign is tastefully done and it's proportionate, uh, to the building facade and then includes the sign height. Um, relief for, uh, justification for relief is the, uh, the flexible seat balancing test. Uh, the benefits of the project as a whole outweigh any detriments. This comes from New Jersey case law, uh, in the Poolen case. Uh, the project benefits, uh, proposed upgrades will, uh, improve, uh, an established business visually and functionally. Functionally, the upgrades provide better customer service and operational efficiencies, improved operational efficiencies. Visually, the upgrades will enhance the image of the building, as you can see from the exhibit submitted, and, uh, also enhance the, uh, Route 46 corridor. All of the above, uh, promotes purposes of the municipal land use law and they are A, G, H, I, and E, which include A, uh, promotion of the general welfare, uh, G to provide sufficient space in appropriate locations, uh, for commercial uses to permit, uh, to meet the needs of all New Jersey citizens, H to encourage local, uh, location of design of transportation routes and to promote free flow of traffic, uh, I to promote a desirable visual environment through creative development techniques, and N to encourage coordination of various public and private procedures to, uh, lessen the cost of development and to, uh, be more efficient, uh, with the use of land. Uh, the, uh, potential impacts here in the application are all relief can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and, uh, and to the, or to the zone plan. The building coverage, uh, relief, uh, is mitigated by overall coverage expanding, uh, when in regard to the lot coverage for the impervious coverage and the building coverage. Uh, setback relief is at the back of the site, uh, and relates to the existing condition, which is the self-storage, uh, use, uh, again, uh, Cube Smart. Uh, load, uh, berth dimension is more efficient design solutions and avoids unnecessary pavement. Uh, and the sign package, again, is tasteful and integrates the overall site, uh, not, and it's not over-empowering and, and not excessive. Uh, in conclusion, the application, um, modifications will improve the established business visually and functionally. Relief, uh, is a minor, uh, uh, degree in nature and will minimally, if any, have no negative effects and the statutory criteria for granting the relief is met and the approval is respectfully warranted and we ask you to approve this application tonight.
Mr. Leon Cavallo, just one question. We've, uh, agreed to a number of conditions here this evening as part of the application. Is it your opinion that these, uh, conditions have helped mitigate some of the possible negative impacts and helped with this application for the board to grant this approval? Should have seen what to do so?
Yes, it is. I think the board was very thorough in going over the details of the, uh, the site plan and has, uh, met that, uh, that proof and, uh, has tried to do it in a, a reasonable manner.
Thank you, I have no further questions for this witness. Anybody on the board have questions of this witness at this time? Hearing and, so Mr. Math?
With regards to the, um, building coverage, which, I mean, obviously it's a fairly big variance, 6,200 square feet. Isn't it true that if I take the car wash and the drop-off area and the storage area, break room expansion, that's about 5,900 square feet? And that's not really part of the principal use, there are accessory additional things?
They, they are, but in the nature of, of the service component that is being established by, uh, in my view, many dealerships, that they're separating out the service component from the sales component, uh, due to, uh, the expansion and necessary requirements of the technical, uh, auto repair side of things.
I guess what I'm getting at is I'm trying to under, like, to come up with maybe a rationale for why it's okay to approve, uh, a variance for building coverage for this use, given the evolution of the use. I'm just looking for some backup, but.
Mr. Leon Cavallo, I'll remind you, the testimony, uh, about the drop-off area and the coverage area is that that's, uh, for people to drive in, drop their cars off and move internally into the, uh, building itself and then climate weather, they're coming out and picking up their cars. So that's a key component of the service that's being provided, but it's also enhancing, uh, public safety, isn't it?
Absolutely, as the board has, uh, inquired, uh, what is the safest way to, to approach this so that pedestrians, uh, will not be in danger as they cross these areas? And I think the answer is it is a safety issue.
So, I'm sorry.
At what point would things like a break room and a car wash attached to a service area being done by? area being done by the competition and everybody else, take it from being an accessory to that use and part and parcel to a component of that use from a planning perspective?
Well, I think from a planning perspective, as you get closer to using accessory uses for individual improvement of, of a site with a specific use, it becomes very important to look at that.
No further questions?
If you look at the outline of the Audi building, and not counting the car wash, the outline of the Audi building will fit almost right on top of the outline of, of this new building. It's almost the same.
Believe the, uh...
Not counting the car wash.
Sorry, I didn't hear you.
Excluding the car wash, it's almost the same sized building.
I think Mr. Walker mentioned that in his comments, that buildings are almost, they flip-flop, almost identical.
Yeah.
Any other questions by members of the board? Hearing and seeing none. Are there any members of the public that have any questions of this witness on this testimony at this time? Hearing and seeing none. Do our professionals have any comments or thoughts they'd like to put before us? Mr. O'Neill, is this your case?
I have no further witnesses. And after you call the public, I'm gonna have no further comments. I rely on the application.
Okay.
And thank the board for its time.
I'm gonna ask if there are any members of the public who wish to speak in opposition to this case at this time? In favor of this case at this time? Hearing and seeing none. That's your case, and you're sticking with it?
Yeah, thank the board for its time this evening. I know it's getting late.
Yep.
Nobody wants to hear.
This closes the evidentiary portion of the case at this time. Do we wish to have any discussion, or does somebody wish to move the motion?
Before that should really start the conditions, so that's not clear.
That's a good start.
So the first condition is signage along the northeastern, northwestern drive aisle to the effect of authorized personnel only, as to eliminate the possibility of the pedestrian, I'm sorry, the customers driving in that one-way drive aisle. Along that exit point that we discussed next to the proposed oil room is to provide a stop sign, potentially some hashing, kind of speed bump.
They'll work for the professionals on that.
Yeah, whatever combination works best. I think we provided as many options as possible there. Update plans showing the ADA spaces and the electric vehicle charging stations, and provide the parking breakdown for the ADA spaces. Provide the calculations for the sewer and water for the car wash. With regard to the soil movement, provide the permits and applicable fees for the soil movement. And comply with the standard conditions, which will be listed pre-app meeting and so on and so forth. In a crosswalk near the service bay with an island, as indicated, either provide the DOT permit or a letter of no interest. Directional signs internally, kind of general comment in that, again, we don't wanna over-sign it, but there were some comments about signage along the rear, so provide some directional signage without having to do maybe a formal plan, I don't think that's necessary here, but we did speak...
We'll identify it.
Yeah, we did speak in depth about where those would be.
Some small internal circulatory signs is what you're...
Yes, correct. Move the refuse from its proposed location to the southwest corner, creating a new variance, and update the plans accordingly. Create ADA accessible curb, drop curb at the front. And that's all I have.
Now that there's also a condition for a crosswalk in the front.
I did indicate that.
Moving the dumpster to the back.
Yes.
And numbering the spaces.
Numbering the spaces, that was really more of an operation statement, if the board would like that as a condition.
Dan, you got the note car inventory, right? I, I was, the, no, the no storage of inventory of sale, cars for sale?
That, that was testified to multiple times. The board wants that as a condition, so no sale of vehicles. Yeah, it was testified to by multiple witnesses.
Okay.
Uh, so no, no sale of vehicles. The dumpster is to be closed with a solid vinyl fence. Those are the conditions I have.
Is there anything else that...
Did we include that signage for employee only?
Yeah, again, I kinda left it generally, as for directional signs, again, I think the applicant will provide some internal signage, and then, you know, we'll kind of leave it to the board, board engineer to, you know, determine whether or not...
We trust Andrew.
The, the big ones, I think, are the no employees at the rear, the authorized personnel at the west, and then those are probably the two main ones. Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Mr. DeDee.
Motion to approve application number twenty-two point five zero two, Paul Miller, one eight nine Route forty-six, block seven six seven, lot four point zero one. Preliminary and final major site plan to construct an addition for service base, waiting area, offices, and signage.
And, and including the major soil moving permit?
Soil moving permit with the conditions as they now.
Do I hear a second?
Second, Neely.
All right. Nora, would you call the roll, please?
DeDee?
Yes.
Yes, my only concern is the car wash, not recycling the water.
I think the water department will tell them what to do.
Well, my concern.
Yes.
Neely?
Yes.
Mac?
I'm gonna vote yes, and on the basis of the variance relief for the building coverage in that the, putting the car wash on this property and, and securing the drop-off area, although not really required for the use per se, are a safety benefit, and I believe that that, that justifies a building coverage variance. Thank you.
Okay.
Neely?
Yes.
Dingsmore?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone.
I never, I never heard it.
Mr. Napolitano?
Oh, Napolitano.
Yes. But I also share the council's concerns.
All right. Well, the result is the passing of the application. Mr. O'Neill, enjoyed it?
Thank you, that's great. Have a good night.
Again, thank you, board, for your, your efforts.
Motion to adjourn?
You've made a motion to adjourn. Do I hear a second? Anybody wish to spend the night? You have a long, dirty home?